Hello, everyone. Good evening, Bridgeport. Thank you for coming out. It is 7:43. This is our Tuesday, May 14 meeting, and we are called to order. Please rise and pledge the flag. Thank you, everyone. Angela, roll call, please.
Laura Hauck.
Here.
Kyle Shank.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
No one.
Here.
Anne Gundrum.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Osama Al Zayed.
Here.
Madam President, I note for the record, we were in executive session for consultation preview with our professional as well as real estate acquisitions.
All right. Good evening, everybody. First up, for council consideration, approval of the April 9, 2024, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
A motion for Mr. Shank, a second for Mr. Heil. Do we have any comments or questions from the public or council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
All right, very good. Next up, the announcement of the 2024 Dr. Vincent Morales Scholarship Every year for the past, heavens, I don't know exactly the date. I probably should at this juncture. Great many years now. Council, each member of council forfeits a portion of their annual stipend they receive as, you know, as annual payment for being a member of council, in addition to the mayor, in addition to contributions from our engineer and solicitor, in the name of funding a $2,000 scholarship that goes to an eligible student that is matriculating on to either undergraduate or graduate school, a Bridgeport resident that exhibits what the scholarship committee determines to be the, that year's best combination of scholastic acumen, community participation and involvement, and extracurricular activities. And the deadline to submit was this past week, Wednesday, May 8. We had four really good candidates. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Vice President Tony Heil to announce this year's winner.
Yes, we had a good discussion about who to choose for this year's scholarship. Great applicants. And our choice this year is Rafia Malloy. She is going into nursing and has a wonderful story about using her education to help others. So congratulations to Ms. Malloy, and we look forward to seeing her at a future council meeting. And thank you to everyone who applied. All the applicants really show the progress and promise of the youth here in Bridgeport.
Thank you, Vice President Heil. I know that the committee had a tough, tough selection. It's a tough selection every year. It's always a crop of really good applicants. But unfortunately, generally only, only one winner can be selected. So congratulations to Ms. Malloy. Congratulations to our other applicants who were considered. And Borough Administration will reach out to Ms. Malloy and hopefully get her to attend an upcoming meeting so that we can present that award publicly. So thank you all. And moving on, we have a presentation from the Borough Auditor regarding our 2023 audit results. And I will, I will turn it over to Mr. Carl Hogan of the Withem Corporation, formerly BBD LLP. Carl's been our auditor for the past seven-plus years now. And Carl, I have your presentation embedded into mine, so just give me the heads up when you want me to go from slide to slide, all right? Thank you.
Do I have to turn this on? Or is it on already?
It's on.
Okay. Like Keith said, I don't think I mentioned this to everybody, but yeah, our firm went from our little $10 million firm to merging into a $500 million firm. So this will be the last BBD audit report you'll have. And now it'll be Withem. So hopefully it's a good thing for us, but you know, I don't think it'll change this relationship. It'll still be me and my team coming out every year, just doing the audit with just a different name.
Congratulations on the presumed promotion or, you know, successful business. Yeah. Just congrats on the, it's a big deal.
Yeah, it is a big deal. I'm sure it'll be a little pain, but.
Did you say your new firm is WIGM?
WIGM, yes.
Like the police chief?
Oh, not like WIGM. No, W-I-T-H-U-M. No, no, not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. No. So, so I'm still using the BBD, you know, slides here because it's still going to be a BBD report for the current year. But this is December 31, 2023. I know everybody is, you know, pretty aware of where you ended up for the year end of 2023 as you went into the 2024 budget process. And I think it'll just be a good segue as you get halfway through the year. And before you know it, you'll be getting, working on the 2025 budget. So if not already. So the first slide I kind of put together, there's a whole audit packet that's put together with the official financial statements with the independent auditors report, the DCED report, and then also, which needs to be submitted to the state and also in the current year. Like I spoke about earlier tonight, there is a single audit that needed to be done for the borough for the current year because you received in excess of $750,000 or spent in excess of $750,000 of federal awards for the current year. So this single audit, I would presume, will occur in 2024 and in 2025 as you wrap up the program, the hazard program mitigation program that you're currently going through, working through the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. And this money's passed through the United States Homeland Security Department. So hence, as a pass-through agency, we're auditing it as a single audit. But just to highlight a couple of things on the independent auditors report that's actually included in the actual audit package, we have an unmodified audit report or a clean audit report. The numbers that were presented to us by management for the year end of June 30, 2023 were fairly presented. A lot of the sections of the audit report have remained the same besides the single audit language that we've added in there. So management's responsibility to present the annual audit financial report in accordance with practices permitted or prescribed by the Department of Community and Economic Development. So in the case of the borough, they present their DCED on the cash basis of accounting. And then our responsibilities have not changed. But the most important thing is obviously the opinion you want us to give you, a clean audit opinion, which is being presented in the audit report that will be filed with the state. And then there's some additional language for the current year. We have to give an opinion on what we call the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And we make sure that that is fairly presented in accordance or in relation to the annual audit and financial report that's being also presented with the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And also, in accordance with the single audit, we need to prepare our audit in accordance with the government auditing standards and uniform guidance. So basically, what that means is just a whole bunch of more checklists we need to fill out in our, in our auto work papers. The next slide. So I'm just going to kind of go over the results of the three main funds. There's also the liquid fuels fund and also the pension fund. But, you know, for this presentation here tonight, I thought I'd just kind of point out, you know, let's go over your general fund, your capital projects fund, and the sewer fund, that's December 31, 2023, and how things ended up. Your revenues and expenditures were a little bit elevated in the current year because of that $1.2 million of revenues and expenditures you got related to that federal grant for the mitigation grant. So on a normal basis, your revenues would probably be more around in that seven and a half million. I think your 2024 budget's about seven and a half million dollars. And then also, your expenditures were a little bit, you know, increased because of those federal expenditures as well. So at the end of the day, when we take your revenues over your expenditures for the current year, you had a surplus of $1.5 million. And when you drill into that surplus, it's kind of those line items in the revenue line items that were more than budget. Your expenditures are kind of those things you can control. But just the same things happened over the past couple of years where your earned income taxes have come in better than anticipated, your real estate tax collections have come in better than anticipated, and just those kind of things just that kind of piggyback off the local economy. And I think, when you have gone through the budget process in particular for 2023, I think there was a little bit of hesitancy to kind of bump up those earned income taxes in relation because you didn't know how, you know, how much, you know, they're going to continue to grow. I noticed you bumped them up a little bit for 2024 as you've kind of got a trend with earned income taxes. But then the day, when we're looking at that change and the increase in the revenues over the expenditures, it's all being driven by the revenue side and not necessarily the expenditure side, as you typically remain within your budgeted amounts. And then, as a result of the excess of the revenues over the expenditures, you were able to appropriate an additional $766,000 over to the capital projects fund. So you can see it's jumping from the one column to the next column to kind of, you kind of look at it in terms of, hey, we had one-time windfall revenues related to earned income taxes, our investment income, and we're going to go ahead and we're going to invest that in one-time expenditures in relation, related to capital projects. So the general fund had a fund balance of $3.3 million and the delta of what was transferred over to the capital projects fund. And the current year revenues over expenditures was $804,000, bumping up your general fund, fund balance to $4.1 million at the end of the year. And we'll kind of go, what makes up that $4.1 million in terms of assets and liabilities? The capital projects fund, during the current year, there were budgeted projects that took place during the year, various ones across the board, whether fire equipment, police equipment, or any kind of public works on projects that need to be performed. And because of the surpluses you've had in the general fund, you've been able to perform those capital projects expenditures without having to go out and borrow any types of money. So at the beginning of the year, you had $1.9 million in your capital projects fund, the net of, you know, what you spent out of your last, previous year surpluses, plus the current year transfer in, you had $1.3 million still to be expended from that fund.
Excuse me. So the revenue for the capital projects, is that just the money that came in from the year before? Because capital projects, I don't understand where the revenue would be. Is that what that is?
So, so the revenue coming over the capital project comes from two places. It could come from the issuance of general obligation debt. And at the end of the year, what management does is they evaluate, hey, how much money do we have at year end? And what can we appropriate over to the capital projects fund? So during the current year, $766,000 was appropriated from the excess in the general fund over to the capital projects fund. That physical money's not being moved until after year end, and you're kind of seeing the results of the operations for 2023. So you say, hey, Keith makes a recommendation to the council, hey, we're going to move over X amount, and it's moved over after year end.
Right. No, I understand the 766,000, but the 20,000, what exactly is that?
Well, that's just investment income.
That's fine. That's fine. I, when we do our budget, I don't envision it in the same way. So I just, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's all that's really in there. I mean, there's no other revenues that are coming in here, but that's just investment income. And then the sewer fund, once again, good collections on the sewer fund, actually had a surplus for the current year of about $294,000. And the sewer fund sitting with a fund balance of $500,000 at year end. On the next page is just the balance sheet. And like I was talking about before, everything's on the cash basis. So there's no accruals or liabilities. There is a little bit of an oddball thing in here related to the grant. So as you can see, your cash position up at the top is strong, due from other funds. I think we've had this conversation before. The sewer fund, about 10 years ago, had deficit spending that the general fund had to pay for those expenses. And slowly over the years, the sewer fund has been paying back the general fund. And if the sewer fund needed to pay back the general fund, as of December 31, 2023, you can see they have more than adequate cash on hand of $1.3 million to pay that back. But I think it's prudent that management keeps on moving that back, cash back little by little, because you don't want to send all the cash over, then you have no cash in the sewer fund. And then the capital projects fund, there's that $700,000 we just talked about on the previous page. So that $750,000 will get moved after year end over into the capital projects fund, or it has been moved. The one oddball thing is deferred amount and the escrow amount. Because of the fact that you received all that federal money upfront, you don't want to show all that revenue all at once, because then your fund balance would be through the roof, and then you'd be doing your budget saying, oh, we have, you know, $5.2 million of fund balance. So since that's on the cash basis, you physically received the cash, we've deferred the amount that was not spent as of year end. So as that amount was spent in 2024, we're going to recognize that revenue and that expenditure so they kind of match each other. You want, you know, you don't want to have the revenue all in one year and the expenditures in another year. So we kind of used a, you know, kind of a hybrid approach in terms of reporting those revenues and expenditures. So there we, you're seeing at the bottom there, hey, here's what our assets are, our liabilities are on the cash basis, $4.1 million in the general fund, capital projects with 1.5 million, and then the $500,000 in the sewer fund. You know, since this is one of the first times I've came on the public, I just wanted to kind of show, and I, you know, as I was putting this together, I was kind of like shocked how, you know, the borough's been in a financial position to be able to manage their general fund, fund balance in a way that's remained consistent over the years. So kind of evaluating it at the end of the year, making transfers over to the capital projects fund as needed. So over the years, as you can see, you know, the fund balance has stayed within that three to four million dollar range. And because of, you know, the good financial results the boroughs had, they've been able to manage that and keep it within there. So if you think about it, it's about 50% of your current, your budget on an annual basis, being able to maintain that consistent level within the general fund. So number one, it gives you the opportunity to move money over to the capital projects fund, but also, as you go through the budget process, it gives you the flexibility to kind of, you know, use that fund balance to kind of, you know, determine what your tax rate's going to be on an annual basis.
Now, in your experience, do you see a lot of fluctuation in other municipalities?
Um.
More than this?
I mean, I, I see.
Those which municipalities are terrible.
No, I mean, I, it just totally depends on the municipality. I mean, you could have a year where you, you know, you have a municipality that's self-insured, and they have a bad year, and it goes down, and it kind of goes up, and they kind of, you know, manage their tax increase. But just in terms of the borough here, I mean, it's a little bit uncanny to kind of see it just like a straight line across in terms of, typically, you will see ups and downs in any given year. But because of the fact that you have been having excess revenues over expenditures, you're able to keep it at a flatline level through those transfers that we just talked about. So the next slide is the capital projects fund, and this is over the 10-year. So it was kind of a little bit on the low side. There were some capital projects that needed to be done in 2017. There was a general obligation debt, a borrowing. So then you started spending down the borrowing. And over the past couple of years, I mean, you've had projects to do, but you haven't had to borrow any money. And so you've just been able to build up the capital projects and do the needed projects just through, you know, whether it be grant funding through the general fund, or then also, sometimes some of the grant runs through the capital projects fund, but you're able to maintain a nice, it seems like it's about the $1.5 million level over the past three years or so. So it's a great position to be in to have that. And I think also, in your annual audit financial report, it also has a breakdown of what your debt is and what's going to be paid out over. So I think a piece of debt did fall off in the current year. So I think the current year debt service, you know, falls off around 2032, with pieces falling off in between 2027, 2029, 2030. So, you know, it's kind of wrapped around. So as those amounts fall off, then you could kind of evaluate it and see if any future debts needed for any kind of big projects coming up.
And Mr. Truman, as we discussed before, for the audience, that 2017, that big jump is when we got a fire truck, right?
The fire, the fire truck constituted about $500,000 or $600,000 of that. There were, it was a large, large paving project we did that year. Memory doesn't serve exactly what, but yes, the fire truck among some other purchases, Vice President Heil.
And just to kind of talk about that, so you had some large paving projects in 2023 that you didn't have to go out and necessarily borrow the money as well. So, so the next slide is our sewer fund. And like I spoke about before, that due-to-do from was being driven back in 2014, 2015. There were some structural budget deficits that needed to be fixed slowly over the years. The councils passed, you know, budgets that have erased that deficit. And as, like I spoke about before, have put themselves in positive territory, about $500,000 so slowly but surely. Just being able to, you know, establish increases in rates slowly and to kind of evaluate your expenditures, you've been able to get the sewer fund balance back in a positive position over time. And then the last thing is, you know, we want to talk about what kind of audit report you had. We want to report that there was no findings or internal control issues related to not only your regular financial reporting, but also in relation to your single audit. The compliance requirements are relatively simple, and the type of expenditures that you did make were, you know, acquisition of land easily traceable. So we had no issues with the single audit. We had unmodified compliance on that, and the internal controls that are surrounding those federal awards. Also, we'll be filing the annual audit and financial report with DCED that needs to be done on an annual basis. And the single audit needs to be filed by nine months after year end, which we're well ahead of schedule to get that done and to get that filed, not only with the federal government, but also with the state that also monitors that. That's it.
Thank you for coming out. I had, I guess, a quick question. So do you have any recommendations for us moving forward? Like, we'd like to obviously keep in a positive direction with our financials. I heard you kind of mention that because of our grants, that we've been able to kind of stay in a positive direction. As a council, I guess, or myself as well, speaking strategically, does it make sense to continue to hire more grant writers or people with that skill set? Or are there other ways that we can continue to mitigate cost, just from your, you know, from other experiences?
Well, in terms of grants, where you're going to benefit the most in terms of going after grants are related to capital items. The state is always putting, the state, the county, they're always putting out grants, and it's just keeping your ear to the ground and taking advantage of those opportunities. And, you know, you know, I don't know if you need to hire a full-time grant writer. I mean, the opportunities are such that, you know, are kind of limited. You know, I think the current staff, I mean, I think Keith writes a lot of the grant writing currently. And I know he's in tune with, you know, opportunities that are out there in terms of trying to, you know, take, take advantage of them. But most of them are not, not going to be related to operating, they're going to be related to capital.
Great. Were there any other thoughts about our financials or recommendations?
No, I mean, I mean, just the only thing I like to point out when I'm talking about a small borough or a small township, I mean, you're limited in terms of, you know, what kind of segregation duties that you can employ. So it's good that, you know, you have an active council. And also, I know you also employ like a third party that helps out at the end of the year, bringing the audit information together, kind of keeping an eye on it. So, you know, it's just kind of the nature of how some of these organizations have to be, just because there's limited, you know, people. But, you know, as long as the council's staying active and reviewing everything, and, you know, there's a, you know, system of checks and balances with the limited people that you do have, it usually works out okay.
Great. Thank you.
Were there, were there any other questions for Carl this evening? No. Well, Carl, thank you. I certainly appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you.
Right. With that, I believe we need a motion to accept the 2023 audit report results. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion for Ms. Heil, a second for Ms. No one. Do we have any questions or comments from the public or council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night, Carl. Next up for council consideration, a curb cut request, and the address or applicant in question is 51 West Fifth Street. Members of council, in your packets, you'll find a memorandum along with some accompanying information from building code official Wanzick, dated May 9, where he states the address, the applicant's name, owner of 51 West Fifth has requested an expansion to the curb cut at the rear of their property. Upon review of the request and a site visit, I recommend that the request be approved. The applicants have agreed to obtain all permits prior to the start of construction. Please see attached request. And the request is there within. There is no diagram. However, I just want to reiterate that this is an expansion of a pre-existing curb cut or driveway that comes off of an alley at the rear of their property. This would not require a, any loss of on-street parking. It would not impede any, any traffic or anything of that nature. And generally, when we have the requests for a curb cut or sidewalk, or driveway installation, rather, excuse me, along a rear property line or off of an alley, those are, those are relatively easy to rationalize and justify proceeding with.
I know this property owner, they take care of their property well, and they're very responsible. And this is an easy request. So I'll make a motion to approve the curb cut request.
I'll second.
Motion for Ms. Heil, a second for Ms. Gundrum. Do we have any comments or questions from the public or the council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on for council consideration, another curb cut request. The applicant in question here is 519 Ford Street. Members of council, in your packets, you will find another memorandum from building code official Wanzick from May 9, 2024. Applicant in question, the owner at 519 Ford, has requested a curb cut at the rear of their property. Upon review of the, upon review of the request and a site visit, I recommend that the request be approved. The applicant, the applicant has agreed to obtain all permits prior to the start of construction. And again, just like the previous curb cut request, this would be a rear, a driveway going into the rear of the residence property off of the alley. So again, and there is, whereas the previous one was an expansion, this would be a brand-new installation of a driveway. There is a diagram in this one. All of the side yard and rear yard setbacks are adhered to. And again, we're not losing any on-street parking. So this would be a, this would be one that we would recommend approval of.
Again, I know this property, and I think this is a reasonable request. So I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion for Mr. Heil, a second for Ms. No one. Do we have any questions or comments from the council or public?
I'll make one other comment because that corner, Chief, that you're not supposed to park too far up towards the turn at Sixth and Ford. And I've noticed a number of cars where they're parking too close to that. I think this might help alleviate that maybe. The, the construction team there is actually doing a very nice job, and they've been helpful to the neighbors, is my understanding. But just making sure for safety reasons that line of sight is not being blocked. So let me get a chance to check that out.
Thank you, Vice President Heil. Any other comments?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on for council consideration, a motion to authorize the borough solicitor to secure the execution of a lease between the borough of Bridgeport and the Bridgeport Community Fund under terms and conditions negotiated by the borough solicitor and to the satisfaction of borough council. And I would turn it over respectfully to Solicitor Bello for any additional elaboration on that.
I would just mention that that would be a lease of, with regard to the playgrounds up at Bridgeport Memorial Park. And that may very well, it's a may, but it may help us secure some funding to do some improvements together with the Bridgeport Community Fund. So that's the intention.
To be clear, the discussion here isn't inking any lease. It's just we're, we're asking you to go out and communicate with the community fund about what, what we may be able to do there.
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to authorize the borough solicitor to secure that lease. And I wish the borough, the fund well and, and their success to get that funding.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion for Mr. Heil, a second from, I'm sorry, Ms. Hauck. I'd like to comment and say that we're currently working on building our relationship with the Memorial Park Fund. We're very excited about moving forward. This is a first step in our collaboration with them to get, to get new park equipment. So looking forward to the next steps here and to, you know, getting the new park up there, getting the new park equipment up there for all the kids to play. But if there are no other comments or questions, we can certainly move into, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Next up for council consideration for the, excuse me, the authorization to purchase a backup generator installation at the Bridgeport Number One Fire Company Fire Station. The winning or lowest responsible cost estimate would be from Gillette Mechanical LLC. And the grand total on the. the grand total on this would be $12,567. Members of council, in your packets, you will find a cost estimate from not only Gillette Mechanical, but from two other competitive, competitive vendors to install a, a new generator that, back, emergency backup generator, which would power the, which would power the lighting, power several other, you know, several specific rooms and functions throughout Bridgeport Fire Company Number One Fire Station in the event of a, a power outage. And as we all know, Bridgeport is subject to power outages from time to time. So as a reminder, this expenditure was authorized in the capital projects budget for, when, when council adopted the budget in 2024 and was discussed last fall during the budget preparation season. We're just at the time now where the fire company has procured the, the lowest estimate they could find and wants authorization to proceed. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Mr. Schenk, second from Ms. Nolan. Do you have any questions or comments from the public or council? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you. And secondly, for council consideration, authorization to purchase a backup generator installation at Goodwill Fire Station. And again, the lowest responsible cost estimate here is Gillette Mechanical LLC, and this one came in at $13,720. Second verse, same as the first, these, these are previously approved capital expenditures in the 2024 capital budget, and Gillette Mechanical was considerably lower than the other two vendors that provided estimates. I'll make that motion as well for Goodwill.
I'll second that. You both seconded that one?
A motion for Mr. Schenk, a second from Ms. Hock. Are there any questions or comments from the public or council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, are there any items of unfinished business that council would like to discuss this evening? Well, seeing none, we can proceed to committee reports. Are there any committee reports to share?
I have one announcement from the Community Events Committee. We will be having our first Bridgeport Family Movie Night of 2024 right here at Borough, Borough Hall. The movie will be Spider-Man Far From Home, so we hope that you can come out. We'll start right at sunset and we'll have popcorns and, I guess, just popcorn, but I almost said drinks, but I guess we did. We should work on that maybe, but I hope to see you there.
Best popcorn there is, Councilwoman Haile. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Haile. Any other? If anyone wants to donate drinks, bring them up.
There's free refills of that popcorn, right? Yeah.
And it's only a dollar.
You're encouraged to bring your own.
I have a report for the Spring Cleanup Day Committee, as it may be. I don't know, it's like a floating activity, but I'd just like to say a thank you to the 33 volunteers that we had on Saturday, May the 4th. Those were both residents and non-residents, as well as business owners of, of Bridgeport businesses around here. The Bridgeport Rib House actually had 10 of their employees who, who came out. We also had representation from DeKalb Chiropractic, as well as Bridgeport Vet Hospital, and Ryan from the Depot Bar, while he was not able to participate on the day, he was able to also get a small crew to help out around his neighborhood. We also want to thank our lunch sponsors. We had, we had Dino's Pizza, as well as Bridgeport Rib House. We had delicious pizza and wings from them. And also for the Junebug's Sweet Treats did also offer any volunteers, you know, who came out during, to come to the shop for a sweet treat during the cleanup day hours. And I will say thank you for the amazing berry tea and the delicious chocolate chip cookie. We greatly appreciated that. Yes, and with our volunteers, I want to, I estimate with people who may have went back to get another bag with cleanup, anywhere from, I want to say like 35 to 40 bags of trash were collected. We did fill up the, the borough garbage bin, so thank you, everyone who came out.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Nolan.
Yes, I wanted to update everyone on the Halloween Subcommittee, more of a planning committee for Halloween. So this year, I know it's pretty early, but planning these things kind of take a long time. The borough's planning on having a big parade and a fun party right after, including a month full of fun activities. And we had, I think, over 15 volunteers show up to the committee. I encourage anyone that wants to kind of be involved to come. It was a really friendly group of people, we had a good time and discussed some ideas. So any idea, big or small, if you can't make every single one, that's completely fine. If you have kiddos at home and you want to bring them along, don't feel obligated to find a sitter or anything like that. This is kind of a free, fun space for anyone that has an idea or wants to contribute in a small or a big way. So just wanted to kind of update and thank everyone for coming out. The other thing that I'll say is we are really looking to partner with a lot of local businesses. So if you feel like this is something that you're interested in as a local business in Bridgeport, please feel free to reach out to me, and I'm more than happy, more than happy to chat about how you can participate or, you know, different ideas that you might have. Again, just want to thank everybody, I'm really excited.
And I'll add, you mentioned small business. We have our small business meeting this coming Monday and Finance Committee on Monday as well. We also had our recent county planning meeting, and we're here at the borough to talk about our long-term planning. And we should have some reports on that in the summer, so they're going to be coming from the county to show the overall plan for zoning changes, and looking forward to that because it's very positive to make things more business-friendly for the Fourth Street, while also making, taking care of residents so that there's more amenities for everybody.
All right, thank you, thank you, President Alzad and Vice President Haile. Seeing no further committee reports, let's move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you. Just want to say, on May 6th, in honor of International Firefighters' Day, I was able to thank our volunteer fire department members with a, an annual pizza party. These volunteers provide a crucial service to our community, and it's the least we can do to say thank you for it. So if you're interested in learning more about how you can thank them, or if you want to get involved in any type of capacity or time commitment, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or a fire company member. If you haven't heard, the Bridgeport Fire Department's also hosting their annual spring flea market right across the street from Borough Hall at Fire Company Number One on Saturday, May 18th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. So make sure to stop by for some great deals that help support our fire department. And this month, my office hours will be taking place on Thursday, May 23rd, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. in my office, which is on the first floor of Borough Hall. And for some fun stuff, I want to invite everybody here and watching the recording to join me at the Fire Company's Thursday, May 30th bingo event, beginning at 6:45 p.m. to celebrate my birthday. Tonight, I'm touting all the ways you can support our fire department, it seems, and this is just another way. These bingo games happen every other Thursday, but this particular event is going to be extra fun, as I gather as many of our bingo-loving neighbors as possible to have a great time. It's going to be extra fun, because I didn't tell them, so they're going to get a lot of extra people, I hope, and not be prepared for it. So that'll be very fun, I hope you join. Finally, also mark your calendar for Friday, June 14th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. to join me and the Norristown Library right here at Borough Hall for a family fun night. We're going to be playing games, eating free pizza, hanging out with neighbors during the summer. This is for everybody who's told me they're looking for things for them and their kids to do, but absolutely everybody's encouraged to attend. We're also working on creating some additional children and teen-friendly programs for during the summer, so please stay tuned. And please let me know if you have any questions about this or any future events. And that's all I have this evening, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Moving on to the chief's report, Chief Beretta.
Good evening, Bridgeport. Want to thank the, the mayor for putting out about National Police Week. It's a time where we, we think about our fallen comrades and assess the current state of affairs in policing, so this is that week. So if you see one of the Bridgeport police officers, say hello as you're walking around. One of those hellos is going to be from Wendy's when they deliver a breakfast sometimes secretly this week, so that'll be, that'll be a nice change. Wanted to say, thank Mom's Meals, Cindy Asili, working with Growing Bridgeport, we took in 500 meals. We got 300 out to churches and shelters in Norristown and another 200 that, that were dispersed through the, the teamwork here in Bridgeport down at Frosty Falls on the Fifth, so that's good stuff. I'm going to see about securing some additional support that we could always keep in reserve so that we'll have that and don't have to ask for it to have 500 meals or so. So that's a great thing. There was a Race for Peace event in Upper Marine at the mall we've participated in for the last five years. One of our juvenile officers, Officer Stead, worked with the other officers from multiple agencies over at the mall, just integrating with people, talking, asking questions, answering questions. So it's a good event to prepare, to prepare for us for our August 13th national night out. Most recently, you may have seen police cars with their red and blue lights on. We just finished an aggressive driving grant and pedestrian grant. So we had 30, 32 hours of police time for the aggressive driving grant, and then we had, I think it was about 10 hours of time for pedestrians. So a lot of, a lot of things come up where people don't understand what the laws are for pedestrians. So just to take a second, people walking may cross the street at any point, but pedestrians and motorists must understand their responsibilities. When a pedestrian crosses the street in a crosswalk, the driver, the driver must yield. Drivers are not required to yield until you begin to step into the crosswalk. Pedestrians should not walk or run unexpectedly into the path of a moving vehicle. Pedestrians should not assume drivers will see or yield. Look left, right, and left again before stepping out. It is illegal for drivers to pass a vehicle that has stopped for a pedestrian in a crosswalk, as the second driver may not see the pedestrian in the crosswalk. If a pedestrian crosses the street, not an intersection, and there's no crosswalk, the pedestrian must yield to vehicles. And when crossing the street at a signalized intersection, both pedestrians and motorists must obey the traffic control devices that are in place. So I just wanted to pass that, pass that along. We had a drug take-back event on the 27th. We, we have a total yield of 26 pounds of drugs. I think it was about 17 pounds that were taken in that day, but the rest was all taken for destruction. It's a good way to keep those dangerous drugs off of the shelves that people have. So many thanks for Dave Nash for being there. There's going to be a raffle for Bridgeport Elementary School raffle with a ride to school. So some, some of our favorite kids may get the chance to, to ride in a Bridgeport police car coming up in the not-so-distant future in a totally positive way. Totally positive. Unfortunately, as we knew back in, in, in April at Frosty Falls, there was a, the loss of a kayaker. Horrible thing. Bridgeport Fire Company and Police Department were deployed to assist Upper Marine Police and Upper Marine Fire Companies in the search. One positive thing from that was the, the utilization of our boats, our new boats, out in a real-world event to, to assist. So we had firefighters and police officers from Bridgeport deployed in that, in a real-world event. So sorry for the family of, of the fallen, but we did, we did get our equipment out in there to try to help. I thank June for her delicious Mother's Day cake for my wife. That was incredible. What a, what a great, what a great resource she is for Bridgeport and her business. Couple, a couple recent events, we had an attempted bank fraud for $10,000. I guess they shouldn't have picked Bridgeport because they got caught and they went to jail. Some other people thought that they were smart, they're going to call back in as well, and hopefully we'll catch them on the backside of that. The important thing is to understand that you might have critical data, critical information that other people can get their hands on. Don't leave it out. In this case, people got ahold of somebody's information, banking information, and, and make, made fake IDs to mirror the name of the actual victim, and then they went to banks where that person had an account. They hit somebody in Delaware and got away with it, but they didn't get away with it here, so that's a good thing. Ride to school, I think that's all I have for you. Stay dry and stay safe, Bridgeport.
All right, thank you, Chief. Moving on to new business, are there any items of new business to discuss this evening? All right, seeing none, we can proceed to open forum and announcements. Are there any announcements for this evening? If there are not, I have one message to Bridgeport residents regarding the, an update on the new recycling containers that are coming. Bridgeport Borough received a notice from J.P. Mascaro and Sons this afternoon, or excuse me, yesterday afternoon, that the delivery of the new recycling containers, which was scheduled to occur this week, has been delayed until next week. We are now being told that the new recycling containers will be delivered to residences on Tuesday, May 21st. Over the last couple of weeks, residents should have received postcards in the mail titled, "We're on a roll with information relating to the delivery of the new 64-gallon recycling containers to every residential trash account at no cost to the borough or the resident." And just a note, as, as, as I noted, these recycling bins will, or containers will be delivered to every residential trash account address. Residents that wish to keep their old recycling bins for other household uses or for continued recycling purposes in addition to their new containers are more than permitted to do so. However, if you wish to discard your old recycling bins once the new container is delivered, put that old blue bin out on a trash or recycling collection day curbside, plainly mark it as "to be discarded" or "please discard," and Mascaro will take it away from, for you. Thank you all for your, for your attention in this matter.
Keith, I have a quick question. Have you heard anything about us being able to recycle flexible plastics now? I believe that was part of the appeal of the program, so I'm wondering when, I guess we can start doing that next week, and I would love to highlight that so the residents know.
Coincidental that you should mention that, Councilmember Haile. Yes, another unique benefit coming from this pilot program, which Bridgeport and a handful of other of regional municipalities have been selected to, to go in on this for, I know Carbondale Borough, Bristol Borough, Lower Providence Township, I think there's two or three others along with Bridgeport are all, are all in this pilot program, is the addition of flexible plastics to the list of materials eligible to be recycled moving forward. Flexible plastic covers a lot of ground and includes all of the following: inner cereal bags, dog food bags, sandwich bags, bubble wrap, and much more. We, the, I believe that the, the information, in addition to the postcard that came to everybody's house, there's going to be like a hang tag, a piece of information, a marketing brochure that comes with the, the, the new recycling toters. I believe that that will make mention of the, what is permitted and not permitted for the flexible plastics. Residents can proceed with, once they receive the new container, can proceed with adding the flexible plastics in there. I was on the phone, as I said, yesterday afternoon with legal counsel from J.P. Mascaro, and they plan on doing a more robust marketing and education on flexible plastics in the near future. They, and, and as of now, or once the new ones are delivered, we can start doing the flexible plastics, including them in the collection. However, the primary vendor that they sell these flexible plastics to is a manufacturer of the, the fake timber. They, the, the fake, the, the plastic that looks like wood is used for, you know, playground equipment, benches, decking, all types of things. Had a Had a massive fire at their facility. And so it has greatly slowed the current need for that flexible plastic. However, it is still, as I said, they, they are still going to be and will be accepting the flexible plastic. However, they wanted to try to wait until, and this is their words, not mine, wait until that manufacturer, that vendor was back up to speed and accepting the flexible plastics at a greater rate before they start promoting and advertising exactly, you know, rolling it out to greater fanfare, I guess you could say.
Got it. That makes sense. Thanks so much for the update.
Are there any other announcements this evening? All right, if not, we can move on to public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak this evening?
I just want to say since the last meeting, I think it was, I attended the open house for the new homes from Lennar. And I think Council Presidents Alzad, you were there too. It was great to see these, and I don't know if anyone else was there, so I don't, oh, you were there, that's right. Because you, you owed ice cream, I think, right? So they, I, I went to the ice cream first and then they said, you have to go to the other one, so I got with. But it was great to see how many people have been buying these homes. A number of people have moved from another home in Bridgeport to one of these new homes, which is great that people who live in Bridgeport want to be in Bridgeport. That's what we want. And so it's, it's amazing how fast they're selling. And also very positive to see this project that's been going on for longer than any of us have been on council, the, the hope and promise of this coming to fruition. But the new homes are moving up fast and they said that they would like to do some sort of public event this summer, so we'll hold them to that hopefully.
Thank you, Vice President Hyatt. Seeing no public comment or interest in public comment this evening, council could certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
It is 8:35. Thank you for coming out. Meeting is adjourned.